We are going to start the October 31st meeting of the Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Thank you all for coming. There are two items, there are six items on the agenda, but we are going to begin with the capital budget. And that will -- thank you.
We're gonna go through a little bit in detail about the five-year plan and also talk about some of our successes over the last five years and how we have, we believe, pretty successfully used a lot of the money that's been appropriated to CUNY. So just sort of as a review, the capital budget is, as everybody knows, is done on a five-year plan. Our five-year program that we're working on now began in 2008, 2009. Subsequent money that was given in other years were what we call technical updates or technical adjustments to our capital plan. And as the presentation goes through, you'll see that we've given some more money in our capital plan. Since this is the fifth year of the plan, what we will start to do in January and February is we'll start thinking about the next five-year plan. And let me just say that in light of the economic atmosphere, both in the city and the nation, we're gonna have, I think, more modest expectations than we had for this past five-year plan. As of yet, we have gotten no indication from the governor's office or they'll be what we should expect in the plan, so we're gonna keep our expectations low and hope for a good outcome. So this five-year plan was developed, actually, just as I began here at CUNY, now almost five years ago. The result that we had achieved was pretty significant, and it was work that was done by the chancellor and the senior staff, and we received about $1.8 billion. Now, some of the projects were fully funded and some of the projects were only partially funded. And when I mean partially funded, we were very appreciative to be able to get money to start the design of various projects, because clearly that moves a project along. And in addition, the governor at that time and the legislature knew that we would have to come back for additional financing of these projects. And this slide gives you an overview of the funds that CUNY has received, and you see in the subsequent years, those were the technical adjustments that were made to the five-year plan. And in the last three years, mostly we've received just the critical maintenance funds that we've talked a great deal about here at this committee for the colleges. So, as a result of the many years of the budget process that we've gone through, we have a great deal of appropriated and re-appropriated money. You sort of can view that as having money in a restricted bank account. You can't spend it all on day one, but it's there, and if you're giving the go-ahead, you can start to spend that money. So, as a whole, we have $3.3 billion in senior college appropriations and $568 million in community college appropriations. One of the big initiatives that we've embarked on in the last few years has to do with critical maintenance. I think, as this committee knows, because we presented the report, we did an overview, an in-depth study, to figure out how much of deferred maintenance was going on in our campuses, and the numbers were staggering. And as a result of that report, the state recognized that we needed to have a very good critical maintenance program, and so they agreed, over a five-year period, to appropriate $284 million for critical maintenance for the senior colleges. And the view on the community colleges was a little bit different. As everybody knows, it's a 50-50 match, and the state felt that if the city wasn't going to appropriate their portion, there was no need for the state to waste their appropriations. So, you'll see later on in the presentation, we've been very successful in terms of getting the city to appropriate a critical maintenance money, which the state has lived up to their promise, and they have matched that money as well. So, as I mentioned before, the community colleges, in the capital budget process, is a 50-50 match, and there are a number of community college projects that are in need of this city match to get these projects done. I might want to add that, in the last few years, in particular, working with Jay Staff and John Kautowski, we have gotten OMB to recognize our critical maintenance needs, and we have been able to start a number of projects. And just in the last three years alone, the city has awarded to CUNY over $100 million that can be used for critical maintenance projects throughout our community colleges. Having said that, still, much more is needed on the community college side, and we will continue to work with the elected officials and OMB to get them to appropriate those funds. The next slide is, I think, sort of tells it all. We have had a remarkable five years on the capital side. We have, to date, spent $2.2 billion, and I know Don Farley is here, and he was the vice chancellor many years ago, when CUNY went through its last huge building boom, and probably, you know, Don even would be impressed with this number of $2.2 billion. So, this is truly a staggering amount, and I believe that if you go on any of our 24 campuses now, there is something going on everywhere, either a major project or a critical maintenance project, or something that the campus is so desperately needed. So, the question is, you know, how did we spend all this money? How were we able to do this? Well, we modernized ourselves and we renovated ourselves. We updated our agreement with DASNY concerning our working relationship with them, which allowed us to take responsibility for many of our own projects. We reorganized our offices, we hired more professionals, and we created internal engineering and project management teams, and we significantly increased the size and strength of our procurement office. And I've discussed at this committee many times before that by letting requirements contracts, we reduced the amount of procurement time to get projects off the ground and started. And the last major change that we made is that we put greater emphasis on public-private partnerships, thereby leveraging CUNY's assets and Getty projects done in a quicker, more efficient manner. In addition, we have done a tremendous amount of critical maintenance projects. Let me just sort of put it in context. Since 2007, we have started and completed, and currently have in process, on our senior college campuses, over 105 critical maintenance projects. And on our community college campuses, there are 77 projects that have been initiated since 2007, totaling $268 million. And on our senior college campuses, we have a number of major critical maintenance projects underway, projects that really are not minor by any stretch of the imagination. If you were to go up to the City College campus today, the Shepherd Hall facade restoration is almost completed. At York, we're dealing with the groundwater filtration problem. At Hunter, we have upgraded a number of the escalators and have that as a major project. And at Brooklyn College, Ingersoll Hall HVAC. And just the last is Lehman College. We have a central plant upgrade, which will allow them to use their new science building there as well. And at the community colleges, a number of major, major projects. If you go up to Bronx Community College, you'll see a lot of utility upgrade work going on. At LaGuardia, we've begun the facade replacement at Center III. At BMCC, we have a major HVAC upgrade. And at Hostos, we have begun the renovation of the fifth floor and all the bathrooms in the buildings. So, our capital request for next year is gonna be similar to last year. We're requesting $5.6 billion for the upcoming five-year plan, $4.6 billion for the senior colleges, and $1.3 billion for the community colleges. And we'll also be requesting almost another $100 million in REZAO A funding from the borough presidents and the city colleges. And let me just say that our requests, which are priorities that have been set by the board trustees and by the chancellor, are projects that, I believe, many people on the committee have heard us give presentations before. One of our major priorities is to get full funding for our academic building at New York City Tech, which is shovel-ready, and we're hoping that we'll be able to get this off the ground this year, as well as to do the next phase of the field building at Beirut College. We're about to start construction on Phase 1, and clearly, we need additional funds for Phase 2. And another one of our priorities, and continues to be one of our priorities, is what the chancellor noted was the decade of the sciences, and there are many projects which are upgrades to technology across the university. So, I just wanna go over some of our progress over the last year, and buildings that have opened this year, and buildings that we hope will open up in the next year. So, the first project that opened this August was the Hunter College's Silberman School of Social Work and the CUNY School of Public Health, and this project opened this fall and was completed in record time, and is a great example of a public-private partnership project that the university was able to achieve. Right next to the Silberman School is our new dorm for the university's Graduate Center. This is an eight-story dormitory, which fully leased up day one that it opened. It provides 100 beds for graduate students and some faculty housing, and was completed in 11 months' time, which, in the construction industry, is quite amazing. Another public-private partnership project that we opened this fall was the Simulation Center, which is located at Bellevue Hospital. This was a joint venture between CUNY and New York University Langham Medical Center. It is a state-of-the-art facility for first responders and emergency response, and we were able to provide the capital dollars for the renovation, which we could not have had happened without Speaker Silver's involvement and commitment to this project. And NYU is providing an equivalent amount of operating funds, and if you go there today, it's just a beehive of activity in terms of training medical personnel. We are almost done with the new facade at our Marshack Building. It's a new glass curtain wall, and for those who have seen the building over the years, and if you go up to the City College campus now, this is just a totally different building, and this is actually only a few weeks away from completion. This week, we will be opening up the new John Jay Building, the new 620,000-square-foot building on 11th Avenue. It's truly a spectacular building. I'd like to say it's the building that has a little bit of everything. It's got labs, it's got classrooms, it's got a录port, but I think truly, the most spectacular aspect of this building is that John Jay will finally have a quad where its students can sort of experience a real college experience, and the quad is in between the brand-new building and our original building on the campus. And as I said on Wednesday, we will be officially opening up the building. The next project, which we will be opening up for the fall term, is Fidman Hall, and this photo shows the most recent progress of the project. All of the brick and glass are in the building, and the contractor is working feverishly to make sure that this building opens up for the fall term, and we do believe we will be able to make that schedule. Also scheduled for next fall is the new North Instructional Building at Bronx Community College. This 98,000-square-foot building contains classrooms and a library and beautiful information commons, and, as I said, this building will open in the summer of 2012. Another building scheduled to open next year is the new science complex at Lehman College. It's a 66,000-square-foot facility with laboratories for teaching and for research, and we are already anticipating Phase 2 of this project, which will require us to move some of the functions that are on the land that we need to build on. And this is one of those projects which will be in the next five-year capital plan. And also scheduled to be completed next year is the work that we're doing at Hostos Community College at 500 Grand Concourse. We're gonna totally renovate the fifth floor, and also redo all the bathrooms, and make the building ADA compliant, and this building will be available in early 2012. Another project which is scheduled to open, we hope imminently, is the Cufferberg Center for Performing Arts, and I might note that this is one of those projects that, as per our agreement with the Dormitory Authority, that we took over, and the CUNY folks oversee the construction and the architecture and the engineering of the project. And what you see before you is an updated entrance for Colden Auditorium. We did a number of minor work in some other of the Cufferberg Center's buildings, and it'll give this whole performing arts area a new, modern, updated feel, and will work very well for the college. Also scheduled to open next year will be the new CUNY Law Facility in Long Island City. I was out there just a week ago, and the construction, the major construction, will be completed by January, and the building is really an eye-opener, and really would be a great spectacular presence for CUNY in Long Island City. And this will, this new facility will be opening in September 2012. Just this morning, I was out at City Tech, looking at some of the projects, the many projects that we have going on out there, but the one project which will really transform this college, as well as this part of downtown Brooklyn, is the new glass curtain wall, which will be going up on Rory's Hall. And we anticipate that by the end of 2012, this project will be done as well. And just the last project I'd like to update the committee on is our ASRC II project up at City College. This is a 400,000-square-foot, state-of-the-art science facility, and if you go out there now, you'll see that the curtain wall is pretty much completed on both the ASRC building as well as the CCMY building, and this will allow all the work to go on, on the interior of the building, over the winter, and hopefully, we'll be able to move this project even quicker than it's been moving. So, Madam Chair, that's my report on the capital budget.
Thank you very much, and thank you and your team for all the work that you put into this recording every day.
Thank you.
Are there any questions on this segment of the agenda at this point?
No, I think that, you know, one of the things that, when you see all of the work that has been done, you don't realize all of the effort and years that it has taken to bring it to fruition. This is not easy. One out of every, is it one out of every five or every four construction projects in the city, public construction, you know, is under our aegis, so that we are contributing mightily to the economic development of the city, and also, that means, actually, something that people are always talking about, but we're doing it, and that is the creation of jobs and the creation of opportunity. And the ripple effect that it has on other development that will take place in the areas where we are surrounded should not be neglected. So, I think that we, you know, Iris and her team, all of those who worked with her and labor with her in this work, we really owe them a round of thank you for all of the hard work that's been done, and for the young person's job that it takes in order to bring this to the point where it is, and we're looking for greater things to come, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, if I could just, I'm here, I make the presentations, but I just want to point out, Bob Lemieux is here, he's our executive director for Design and Construction.
Stand up, Bob.
Stand up, Bob. Greta Krollman is here. Howie Oldschilder and Megan Moore-Wilk, who does all of our great space planning.
Megan.
Jennifer Cleveland's here, who does public-private, and of course, Don Farley, who is a pleasure to deal with every day.
He looks younger.
Does he look younger?
Yay, Don!
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for that point of view, Vice Chair Barry, because I know you mentioned $5.6 billion, and it's a lot of money, but it's money that hopefully will make money and create jobs, and that's important in our economy, so, thank you again.
You should know, every time that we all go on a job site, the first thing I ask is, "How many people are working?"
That's right. Because that's really the most important part right now.
Exactly.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no questions, I'm going to go back to the first one. I'm gonna just let you continue.
Sure.
And go through one through three, and then five and six.
I think the first one is, I'm not sure if I have the right Chapel Street, is that the first one?
Um, I don't --
We need a --
Don't we need a motion?
I think we need a motion to --
I was gonna do that last, because I see there are some missing people.
Yeah.
Okay?
I think we have a --
All right, so, then I'm gonna go way back, and first, I will ask for the approval and amendment of minutes. I'm assuming everyone has had a chance to review them. I will take the motion to adopt them.
Second amendment.
Thank you very much, it's been moved and seconded, and so, all those in favor of adopting the minutes.
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, thank you. And the second thing I'd like to do is to introduce our new USS Chair designee, Mr., forgive me already, Kupwe Khawka?
Khwaku.
Khwaku, yes. He is the 26th USS Chair for the university, a graduate student at Brooklyn College, a graduate of York College.
Yes.
In mathematics.
In mathematics, right. In business, but mathematics, yes.
The chancellor's favorite subject.
Also, and adjunct lecturer at York College in mathematics and physical education, is that right? Yes, so, and you have a whole bunch of other things that sound very interesting, but get to know him, and thank you very much for your service.
We're counting on you.
Yes. Yes, you have big shoes to fill, so. So, with that, let us go forward on to number one, and I have New York College, technically.
Yes. This item is a request to renew a lease at 25 Chapel Street in downtown Brooklyn. Since 2002, New York City Tech has occupied this building for classroom and office space, and the lease is due to expire in May of 2012. And this resolution will authorize the renewal for an additional 15 years, which the college will clearly need. Okay? The second item is a resolution authorizing a new 15-year lease at a new facility at 119 West 31st Street in Manhattan, on behalf of the CUNY School of Professional Studies. This committee may remember that we have come here before with another request, but unfortunately, we weren't able to culminate a deal with that landlord, and the building was subsequently sold, and the new landlord had no interest in dealing with CUNY. And we were able to actually find space across the street at a building that's now occupied by the state, I think it's the probation department, if I'm not mistaken. Am I right now? Probation. Department of what?
Parole.
Parole, close, I was close. So, the landlord is one who is used to dealing with the state, and used to dealing with the state form of lease, and is very eager to have CUNY in the building, has agreed to create a separate entrance for the School of Professional Studies, as well as, in record time, build out the space for them. So, we are very hopeful that this will be the final home for the School of Professional Studies, once we get this deal done. The next item is a resolution authorizing a 10-year contractual agreement on behalf of Hunter College to provide approximately 40 furnished apartments at 1763rd Avenue in Manhattan. Demand for student housing at Hunter has really outstripped its 600-bed dorm at the Brookdale Site. The facility at 1763rd Avenue will provide double and triple occupancy furnished rooms for students from Hunter College and other CUNY institutions, and this is being offered at a competitive price for New York City, and one that we feel that Hunter students can afford. The next item is an amendment to an item that we brought to the board in February of 2007, on behalf of Kingsborough Community College, and this would allow an increase in the approved amount that we originally brought for the renovation of the college's Bursar's Office. The college, working along with our group, determined that additional work needed to be done to expand the Bursar's Office, and so this project will require more construction and more furniture, more equipment for this entire facility, and so the amount will now be $1.2 million. And the last item, Madam Chair, is a resolution to authorize agreement to provide credit support for the residence hall known as the Summit, on behalf of Queens College. A letter of credit extension required for financing the Queens College Residence Hall will expire in January and must be renewed. Because of the uncertainty in the credit markets, an extension can only be secured if CUNY guarantees any shortfall in the rent revenue needed for debt service and operating costs. The project has been very, very successful and fully occupied since its opening in 2009. Any call on the CUNY guarantee would follow a financial obligation by the Queens College Special Projects Fund, and is extremely remote. Okay? And those are the items.
Thank you. Are there any discussion on any of the items? Yes.
Question on the Kingsborough item. The initial amount, I mean, it tripled. What is, can you elaborate a little bit more?
Well, originally, we were doing just one small part of the Bursar's Office, and it was determined that the whole suite needed to be done, and as a result, because we expanded the project, we needed to do more HVAC work, more electrical work, so the project really did triple in size, and therefore, the cost tripled as well. Okay?
Thank you. I may be mistaken, but am I correct in believing that the School of Professional Studies occupies space currently in the graduate school?
They occupy some space there, they occupy some space on 33rd Street off of Sixth Avenue. They're currently using some space at the new community college. They are all over the city of New York, and this space would give them a new home, and they would then vacate those other spaces and just be located in this new space.
Well, I ask because the faculty in the graduate school are constantly being pushed out of offices they have had, and I'm just wondering whether this is going to make it a little more possible for people who function there to do what they're supposed to be doing.
The answer is yes, and that's why we're --
It's gonna pre-upspace.
Yes, that's why we're giving them a new home. So, once the space is completed, they'll move out of the little pieces of space they have all over, and then move into this one. This will be their home, their official home.
One last fact, do you know -- One last fact, do you know when this might happen?
Well, we're hoping that we will be able to negotiate, as I said, with the landlord very quickly, because he's used to the state form of lease. So, we're hoping that that should take us about four or five months, and then probably another 12 months of construction. I'm being, I'm being a little conservative here, because of course, one never knows what one finds when you start doing a renovation. But my guess is, in 18 months, they'll be out of where they are, and they'll move home.
Thank you.
One last question, Iris. On the dormitory facility space, in a conversation with FIT faculty this weekend, they said they're finding they have excess dorm space right now, because with the downturn in the economy, students are commuting from longer distances. Have we talked to them? Have we made any comparisons?
We haven't talked to FIT. We do have, Baruch has about 100 beds at a SVA school, visual arts dorm. And we're trying to work out even more beds for the Baruch students at that dorm. Wholesale, we haven't really found that a lot of colleges are coming to us with excess space. And as I said, FIT, what?
It's good to know.
Yeah, it's good to know about FIT, because they're so close to Baruch. So, yes, we will be happy to reach out and find out what's available.
Any other questions? Okay. We're going to move to, I'm going to accept a motion to adopt these resolutions.
Remove.
Second?
Second, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? These items are adopted. And thank you very much. That concludes this meeting.
Can I just make a quick one?
Yes.
I just want to know, has the university ever given thought to a centralized stadium for like sporting and special events?
I haven't had any discussions about it, but would be interested to know where we could find such stadiums.
We have had lots of endless conversations, and we've delivered a stadium in the city on that subject. And we're able to use a lot of, we have a lot of relationships, particularly for Manhattan Campus, which is a shorter field space, where we can use space in Roosevelt Island, use space, you know, in all the big facilities in the city. We'd love to purchase a big place just for rent, because we have a plenty of assets in the city.
We shouldn't have given up Lewis and Stadium.
Thank you.
How many years ago was that?
Forty.
Forty?
Forty, at least forty.
Like after I graduated, that's when I said...